At this time, I believe we do have the floor and all members up present. Even Mr. Elmore is here.
What about him?
At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Capps, our county engineer, to give our invocation.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the blessings you've given us. We pray for our men and women that's fighting overseas. Let's be with them, be with their families, Lord. Let's be with the commissioners today as they make decisions that affect this county. I hope they'll be to your pleasing. In this name we pray. Amen.
Amen. First, let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a caution to the members and whoever's speaking at the mic, please go directly into the mic. That's on instruction from Kevin, who operates our sound system. Is that okay, Kevin?
Right.
Okay. We'd like to welcome everybody here today. We thank you for your interest. We thank the news media for providing information to our citizens about what we're doing for them. So with that, at this time, we need to adopt the official agenda. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So move, Chairman.
I second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There be all opposed, there be none. Motion carried unanimously. At this time, we have a proclamation concerning pro bono week. I was thinking Mr. John Peake would be here, but he's not here, but we have the proclamation in front of us. So what is the pleasure of the commission?
I think I just saw Jonathan in the door.
Oh, that's what I was, I wasn't sure.
Our doorkeeper's pretty selective who she lets in. While we're waiting on him, I believe we're going down for comments from other public officials. If that's okay with the commission. Judge Bowden, you have something for us?
Yes, sir. I wanted to address the committee. Well, I don't know if I'm going to talk or not.
You're going to talk. Come to the mic.
Well, I didn't want to talk, so I'm going to wait. Recognized or not, I have something that I wanted to bring to the commission about the pay scale you often working on. I didn't see that on today's agenda, so I don't mind waiting, or I could present what I have. It's in writing to the commissioners and they could look at it for when that...
We have a procedure that we're going to go through. We're going to develop the pay plan. Commissioners will review it.
Right.
And then we will get with the department heads and let them review theirs. And at that time, we'll take the comments or suggestions of changes.
Right, and I just wondered if I could give what I have to somebody now, so you could be looking at it ahead of time.
Give it to Ms. Petty.
Okay. Sure. Thank you.
Well, I see a man of distinction, Mr. John Peake. That's kind of headed at this time. I'll recognize him.
And I believe we may have demonstrated loose standards of distinction. Thank you all for having me here. You know, this is a, this is a time. I came around last year and y'all were gracious and allowed me to come speak to you to talk about something associated with the Alabama State Bar. It's been a program that's been ongoing for a pretty good while now called Pro Bono Week Celebration. What that is about, especially for the folks here that are not familiar with it, is lawyers, well, the Alabama State Bar has had a, I guess you'd call a slogan or even a mantra for a number of years. Lawyers render service. And it's really, you know, lawyers are supposed to help people. We try to help people. We always look at, even though it's a fictional character, we always look at the literary character of Atticus Finch, who helped someone when it was very unpopular to do so. And lawyers who are, I think I'll hasten to say lawyers who are right-minded about it and professional, think that's what you're supposed to do. One of the problems in Alabama, it's a problem everywhere, but it's particularly a problem in Alabama is we have a lot of people living in poverty. Sometimes those folks have business dealings that go badly. They have personal dealings that go badly and they don't have the means to be able to afford a lawyer. There, when I first started practicing law, there was a well-developed organization called the Legal Services Corporation that I think at one point even had an office here in Andalusia. That organization has, like a lot of others, has scaled back over the years because they just don't have the funding. And so, one of the things the Alabama State Bar does, has a volunteer lawyers program. Where lawyers who are willing to take a small number, I mean, we're not talking about, obviously, if you're doing legal work for free, you can't be successful even doing volume. But a small number of cases per year, if you're in the volunteer lawyers list, where you will agree to accept certain cases on referral from the Alabama State Bar at no charge to the client, and really, it's an effort to help people. The state bar, over the years, has simply asked that if possible, cities and counties help us by recognizing the efforts of those lawyers. You know, it's, our growth has been a slow but steady. I think when I first came here, there were 11% of the County Bar Association members who were members of the volunteer lawyers program. Now we're up to 16%. That only represents, you know, probably three or four people added to the rolls, but it's something that we would like to ask you to recognize because these efforts largely are unrecognized. And I'll tell you, every, every year after this meeting, I get, within the next week or two, I get probably eight or 10 calls asking if I'm a pro bono lawyer. And, you know, the thing that I would say to the public is that the best thing they can do when they're in an unbling circumstance is to approach lawyers through the Alabama State Bar. They have kind of a filtering process for that. Nobody wants to pay legal fees, but at the same time, what we try to do is find folks that their wagon's really in the ditch and see if we can help them get out of it. I prepared a proclamation and...
We have a copy of that in front of us and we reviewed it. So at this time, we're ready to take action.
Thank, and I want to thank y'all for taking time with me today. I'm sorry I was late.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion that we approve this proclamation?
I'll throw a move.
Mr. Elmore, do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Barton, second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Peake.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe we do not have any other public officials here, so we'll move into the old business. First item is consider appointment to the Covington County Department of Human Resources Board. At a previous meeting in September 11th, we appointed Mr. Bernard Stewart to that board. Came to light afterwards that he was ineligible to serve because his daughter works for human resources. So therefore, that created a vacancy. We have Mr. Roger McLean, who had expressed an interest in the position, and he has filled out the appropriate paperwork. So what is the pleasure of the commission?
I think we should, I don't make much, we put him on the board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion to second, appoint Mr. Roger McLean to the Human Resources Board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. Our next item is consider job description for network ministry. At a previous meeting, we approved that position to be in the county workforce. And in the meantime, Ms. Petty in her office has created a job description for us to use as we seek someone for that. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the job description for the network administrator.
I make a motion and we accept that.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. On new business, we will consider the approval of the September 11th regular meeting and continue meeting on September 26th. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions?
I don't, I think we approve it.
I have a motion, Mr. Nordey, to approve them.
I'll second.
Mr. Barton, second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. Next item of business is to consider restaurant retail liquor license for River Seven LLC. At this time, I believe we have anyone who wishes to speak for or against the issuance of this license. Would you please stand and be recognized? If you do wish to speak, you need to come to the mic.
Oh, I really...
Please come to the mic, please, ma'am. State your name.
Mary Canaly, and my home is on Gant Lake. I was interested in the restaurant and wanted to verify, is it a restaurant going in or a bar? And I think any of you would consider that if it was next to your home. I've heard some rumors and just wanted to get things clarified. Hope that it's a good restaurant because it's convenient for me. But anyhow, that was what I was here for, and we'll wait to hear what they have to say.
Let me just say this. We have, no, this is not an approval for either it be a restaurant or a bar. It's just an approval to have a retail liquor license within that establishment.
Well, I understood there was a difference, what you serve. I certainly don't mind liquor license with wine and beer, but I...
That's reflected in your application to the ABC Board. Ms. Moody, would you come in on that?
It's just listed as restaurant retail liquor instead of like off premises or on premises.
Okay, well, that would, I'd like to hear what has to be said, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak to the issue?
Hey, I'm Ms. Delaney. I'm one of the co-owners of River Seven. We are a restaurant. We want the opportunity to allow to serve alcohol, beer, wine, or liquor to our customers. Hours will not be late. It will never be considered a bar for our evening. Our kids work there. There'll never be a time when a child or a parent is going to be worried about sitting at one table and dealing with chaos from another table because of the drunkenness. That's not going to happen. It's a family restaurant. We're just trying to bring the idea here as well as being able to serve alcohol. Give you the option, actually, so. Does that want to answer you?
Is that...
Thank you very much. Okay, all right. Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll just address, I'm Mary Alice Outlaw, and I do live a couple doors over from the restaurant. And I want to eat there and enjoy having a nice meal there and a drink, but I just don't want it to be a bar, which is what it's, everybody has said it's going to be. That it's going to be late nights bar. But a restaurant liquor license, I don't have a, excuse me, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't want it going all night long and turning into a bar. Pool hall in our neighborhood. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
How late at night? Did she say you'd stay open?
We haven't.
You haven't?
So far, we close at 10:00. Maybe 12:00 on the weekends, just for the later crowd. And we will also have bands, but it'll be acoustic set, so it won't be drums and everything. We're even looking at putting up some sound law that'll block because I think sound travels across the water. First, and it will, because we did do a little party one night for, what was it, like a class reunion? And we had a band. I'm sure y'all heard it. Did y'all hear it?
Yeah, we heard the band.
It was just a little too much, I think, so we're gonna...
Didn't you portray it first?
We need y'all at the mic, please.
But it's been stated that they were going to stay open till 2:00 or 4:00 in the morning on the weekends. It was already portrayed that, and they did have, already have a band. And, you know, we're only two doors over and we did hear that band. That's our biggest complaint. If it closes down at, you know, a reasonable time, by midnight, that would be fine. But you're out on the lake, you're way out in the middle of nowhere, and there's all residents around there. It's not in the middle of nowhere, but there's residents around, and, I mean, there's four houses right there next to this restaurant, bar. When it was a restaurant before, there was never, you know, a problem. But staying open past midnight until 2:00 and 4:00 in the morning will create a problem. And we did hear the band the last time that they had a band, a couple weeks ago.
Well, I think it's, y'all have addressed the issue of hours. Is there any other comments or questions from members or anybody? No. At this time, I will entertain a motion from the commission to either approve it or disapprove it or take no action and forward it forward to the ABC Board.
I'd make a motion that we accept their license. We have no control over their power. It's just up to the commission to accept.
We have a motion to send a recommendation to the ABC Board to approve this license. Do I have a second?
I second, Chairman.
You have a second. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider appointments to the Weygrass Resource Conservation and Development Council. That is a council that's involved in economic development. The commission has two appointments to that board. Also, the Soil and Water Conservation District in Covington County also has two appointments to that board. In the past, it's been a history that the commission has always appointed Mr. Capps, our county engineer, and also one of the commissioners to be on that council. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for that appointment.
I make a motion, Chairman, that we appoint Commissioner Kenneth Nordey to fill Brad Carter's vacancy.
And also to reappoint Mr. Capps.
Mr. Capps, I'm sorry. Reappoint Mr. Capps.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Mr. Nordey, I need you to abstain on this particular motion.
Okay. Don't say nothing.
Now, do you vigorously oppose this action? You better speak now.
I have no comment.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried. Consider, our next thing is consider renewal of appointment of Youth Services Long Term Detention Subsidy Contract. Ms. Petty, I would like for you to comment on that.
Certainly. Each year, the state of Alabama, through the Department of Youth Services, provides funding for one bed at the juvenile center of our choice. Historically, that's been the diversion center in Dethin. They don't state the amount, but each month, we see those credits come in on the bills for where juveniles have been transported and kept overnight for a number of days at times. They're over there. But I would recommend acceptance of this contract or this agreement to allow the funding, the State Department of Youth Services to help fund the bed.
I make a motion, we accept this.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to renew the contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. At this time, we will consider declaring a sheriff's department vehicle surplus. Ms. Petty or Mr. Anderson, would you like to address that?
The vehicle is a 2000 model Chevrolet Z71 extended cab pickup truck that was used by a school resource officer, Florilla. It was purchased by a prior administration, and it has engine problems and it will not run. We had to have it towed in, so we had to declare it surplus. And it was purchased with law enforcement funds from the prior administration.
It's my understanding if it's declared surplus and so, the money's from that sale would be going back in law enforcement?
Thank you.
Do I have a motion? We declare it surplus?
I'll throw a move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is school resource officers. As everyone knows, we've been providing that service to the Covington County School System. There's a contract for what we are supposed to do under this contract. And also, the Board of Education, the contract calls for the Covington County Board to contribute $75,000 towards the cost of having the resource officers in the school. Any comments or a motion?
I think it's great that we're allowed to get together, both of us, and supply that need for schools. I got a question, Ms. Petty. How long the resource office been at schools, Ms. Petty?
Oh, since about 2000, 2000.
I believe Anthony Clark was at sheriff at that time.
Somewhere along there.
Okay.
The worst is something we've done way back before this hostage situation coming out, you know. Been going on for quite some time. I think it's good, too.
Any more comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept it.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Barton. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. This next item came to my attention probably three or four months ago. At times, we are asked to appoint members to boards who meet outside of Covington County. And I feel like that if we're going to ask them to serve, at least we could pay mileage because a lot of those meetings are in Dethin. And Ms. Petty may want to make a comment about this, too.
Well, with the cost of fuel, and you're asking people to serve on a board as a volunteer, not a paid position, it can be quite expensive, especially those boards that do meet in Dethin. There are boards that pay mileage. For instance, I'm on the Council on Aging Board, and I'm meeting in Dethin, but they reimburse my mileage. So, but in the case where the planning commission, I don't, y'all that are on that board, I don't know if they reimburse mileage, but a governmental agency can, you know, get reimbursed. But a private citizen out there, he's just out of pocket. So I think this would be a good faith effort for the county to, you know, if these people willing to serve and take their time to go, I think it would be a good thing to reimburse them.
Let me, go ahead, Mr....
If they're not reimbursed by some other agents.
That's a comment that I want to make.
Yeah, if they're not...
I think it'd be great. It might encourage some other folks to be on or serve on the board if they want to pay for their gas to go back and forth those meetings out of town.
Why don't we take it a step further and say for them, if they have to buy lunch while they're there, pay for their lunch, too?
I don't really think we need to go there because a lot of times those meetings do not last over a meal. They may meet at eight o'clock.
Yeah, but maybe the distance may be to the point that they fall into meal time.
The only request I've had is just to pay mileage. Nobody has mentioned about reimbursing for meals. But most, you know, any comments?
Tried.
Now, we haven't voted yet, Mr. Terrence.
Well, when they hear what I said, they'll like me.
Any other comments?
I'm not sure we're allowed to do that. At that time, we're capable of that, Mr. Terrence. Go ahead, Chairman.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll throw, I'll throw a move.
Mr. Elmore, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider bids for seed and fertilizer. Mr. Capps, our county engineer, will present those bids.
Okay, if you look at your last page, we handed out Wilton bids yesterday. We had three bidders, Andalusia Farmers Co-op, Florilla Farmers Co-op, and Op Farmers Co-op. And Op failed to bid on one of the items. So even though their price is low, I mean, if you, you know, consider that, it's $48 low, but they didn't bid, so I'd recommend awarding to Andalusia and Florilla.
So since those two businesses are bidding the same price, you will select the closest to the proximity of the construction project?
That's right.
Do I have a motion? Do we accept these bids?
I make a motion, we accept them.
Second, Chairman.
The motion is to accept the bids from Andalusia Farmers Co-op and Florilla Farmers Co-op. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. Next item is consider request for funding assistance for the Veterans Day Program that's put on every year behind City Hall at the Veterans Park. In the past, we have been providing funds for that. There's a request to provide $300, and this is to go for the reception afterwards for all the veterans.
Is that what we've been, I mean, uh...
Ms. Petty?
It has. We've paid this several years in the past. It is paid from the contingent fund. And I would ask y'all, if you approve this, to make that a part of your motion.
I make a motion, we approve, Chairman.
With funds to be taken from the contingent fund.
Contingent fund, right.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There be a none. Motion carried unanimously. This time, we'll take comments from the board about anything, but be pretty careful what you say.
I have got some comments from our new service we have. People can view our meetings and all. It's been positive and I appreciate, you know, us getting that done. And like I said, it's helped us to be seen, it's helped the media and the other people. So I think it's been good so far. Hopefully, it stays that way.
Probably some of the people that spoke today knew we were streaming this online, live, may not have made a copy of it. But really, it is, it is, go ahead, Mr....
I'm not sure we're live yet. Are we, we're, after lunch, you can view it, right?
That's right, yes, ma'am.
But the last two meetings have been streamlined, on stream, whatever you call them.
If you'd like to give the YouTube address so that people can, you who are watching, well, of course, are watching it, but so the media can have that address.
WWW dot Y-O-U-T-U-B-E dot com slash Cov, C-O-V, County. That's it.
All right. Any other comments? Uh, no.
I don't have anything.
Comments, reports from my staff. Ms. Moody, do you have anything?
No, sir.
And Ms. Petty, do you have any additional?
I'd like to just comment on the process we're in right now with the credit card since Judge Bowden is here, having a little trouble getting the cooperation I need about the fees. And I think y'all addressed the fact that as of October 1st, the resolution stated October 1st for the changeover. But in your comments, and it's reflected in the minutes, you said whenever it is feasible. And Judge Bowden had questioned, he asked for a copy of the resolution, which I gave him. And he just doesn't want to be called in a snag where this resolution says October 1st. And then y'all's comments said as soon thereafter as possible. So just want to bring that to your attention, that he knows he's been given a grace period. I'm trying to work it out. We hope by November 1st, but I don't know. I'm having to deal with the individual cards. And you accept Visa, MasterCard, Discover, anything else?
I don't know if we picked Discover, but I think we picked American Express.
American Express, okay. Well, anyway, I'll be getting with Karen and... American Express, okay, well, anyway, I'll be getting with Karen, and just so that, I wanted the minutes to reflect that y'all are aware that I'm working on it, and he knows I'm working on it, and we'll see where we go with it.
In other words, we have a technol, technical...
We have a technical glitch.
But we're not at a stalemate like Congress.
No, we're, we're in business.
We're still bidding, we're not shutting.
Everybody's getting paid.
That's right, that's the important part.
Anything else? Mr. Elmore's chomping to make a motion that we adjourn.
I throw a move, Chairman.
All in favor, say aye, stand up.